Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our first meeting in November. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office. In preparation of the public meeting, notice dated October 29, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo? Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. And now, if everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. My pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance. United States of America.
Of America.
And to the Republic which stands. And the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearing and comments?
Yes. A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. This meeting is also streaming live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on your YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated October 29, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature, and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session for October 20?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries. All right. Moving on to reports. Madam Mayor? You're muted.
No. Thank you, Council President. As expected, the newly adopted definition of close contact from the CDC is causing more contacts to be identified in school settings, especially in the young grades. The new definition says that within close contact is defined as 15 minutes, but spread out over periods of time. So it's not 15 minutes at once. It could be 15 minutes throughout the day, 2 minutes, 3 minutes, 5 minutes, whatever. So it's a cumulative amount. Because of this, it's very difficult to determine what close contact is. Messaging from the Westfield Regional Health Department focuses on mask wearing, especially in households where self-isolation by infected members is impossible. New flyers in both English and Spanish are available to download, print, and share at thecityofsummit.org on the COVID-19 page. We have also taken some of those flyers, and we are distributing them throughout the city. We are also expecting a box of 1,000 disposable masks tomorrow from the Union County Freeholders, and we'll make them available to citizens soon. We got the last batch of masks from the county. It was in the summer. So schools were closed. At this point, we are going to bring those, a lot of those masks, to all of the schools, since they're now open, as well as the connection, the Y, and we'll take care of that in the next couple of days. With that being said, please continue to wear masks and socially distance from others. It is within our power to control the spread, and although it is not easy, and we all miss our friends, it is essential to follow CDC guidelines. Next thing I want to talk about, flu shots. A final reminder that free flu shots are available for Union County residents aged 4 and older at the Summit Community Center tomorrow from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Protection against seasonal flu is important. It's even more important now than ever because of the COVID-19 outbreak. The goal of the free flu shot drive is to ensure that Union County residents can get a flu shot this year, even with no health insurance. To make an appointment, please go to ucnj.org/flu. I got a flu shot, and I hope you'll get one, too. And lastly, if you're looking for information on local, state, or national races, each day at noon or thereabouts, the Union County Clerk is updating the November 3 general election results on unioncountyvotes.com/results until the results are certified, which will be on Friday, November 20. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. I have two items that might be of interest to the public. Now is the time to bring your leftover pumpkins to the municipal transfer station to be composted. The transfer station is open Tuesday to Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 3:45 p.m. and Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:45 p.m. Alternatively, you can place pumpkins in leaf bags for a curbside pickup on your regular trash day. And then finally, Union County Freeholders will hold its final free papers shredding event of the year on November 7 from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Nokia campus at 600 Mountain Avenue in New Providence. It's a secure way for Union County residents to dispose of personal papers. And that is all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to the Council President's report. First of all, Summit Free Market. The next Summit Free Market event will be on Saturday, November 14 from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it's by appointment only, and you need an appointment to both drop off and also to browse and pick up items. Summit residents may sign up on Monday, November 9 at noon for a 30-minute time slot. Masks are required, and temperatures will be taken for anyone entering the building. Going forward, the Summit Free Market events will be held on the second Saturday of each month. Due to COVID-19 restrictions and concerns about holding the market indoors, the free market may be postponed during the winter months. Until in-person events resume again in the spring, Summit residents can join the virtual Summit Free Market group on Facebook for free exchange and sharing of yard sale quality items by contactless porch pickup. And there's more information available at summitfreemarket.org. The Summit Farmers Market is located in a municipal lot on DeForest Avenue between Maple Street and Woodland Avenue, and it will remain open on Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. through December 20, with the exception of Thanksgiving weekend, November 29. Finally, annual parking permit renewal. The November 16 deadline for residents to renew their annual parking and municipal disposal center permits online at cityofsummit.org/parking is quickly approaching. Appointments are required for all in-office assistants by calling 908-522-5100 or emailing parking@cityofsummit.org. And one of our presentations this evening will be Rita McNanny will be doing, the Director of Parking Services, will be doing a short demonstration of the new program. So stay tuned if you want to learn how to do this. And finally, I just wanted to say our Director of Department of Community Services, Paul Cascades, is retiring today after 39 years working for the City of Summit. I want to thank Paul for his dedication to the city and its residents. Paul has an amazing wealth of knowledge and has shared that knowledge with many city staff members, as well as many council members. I feel fortunate that I have had the opportunity to work with Paul for the past 15 years. Happily, Paul has created an excellent succession plan, which was approved by the council at the last meeting. And I'm confident that the Department of Community Services is in able hands under the leadership of Aaron Schrager. Paul, best wishes for your retirement, and we will all miss you. So with that, we are now on to presentations. This evening, we have with us Carol Bianchi, the Regional External Affairs Consultant from JC Penel. So the way this is going to work is Carol is going to do her presentation, and then there's going to be an opportunity for council members and also the public to ask questions. Because Carol has a very limited time, I am going to ask that residents, I'm going to hold residents to a strict three-minute limit on questions. And I also ask that you keep those questions general, not about your own personal property, but just more generally applicable questions about power outages. So with that, I'll turn it over to Carol. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just want to confirm that you can see the video and hear me adequately.
Yes.
Everybody have good vet? Okay, thank you.
We can see, but we're going to need the video. Rosie, are you putting that up?
Well, I think, no, Carol will be sharing her screen.
Oh, you'll be sharing?
Yeah. So I just wanted to mention that I have my colleague, Jackie Espinoza. She is also in External Affairs, and she's been with the company for 24 years and for 10 years in the role of External Affairs. So she, if you might want to consider putting her in as a participant so that if I should lose my ability to share my screen, or she, I have backup. I have good backup, and she's also going to be able to lend her voice to the discussion. So if you can see her on the screen, I see her right there. She'll be able to assist us. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. The plan for this evening is I'm going to do a brief PowerPoint presentation of the storm. Some of you have seen it already. I know that Mayor Radist and some of the council members, Council President Fox, I think Mike Rogers, you may have seen it, and Councilman Naidoo. But for the benefit of all of you, I'm going to run through it. We're going to talk about what occurred during the storm, and I'll have some specific information about what occurred in the town, the City of Summit. And we're going to conclude it with a discussion about some of the changes that JC Penel is implementing following the storm. So with that, here it goes. I'm going to share my screen. And you can let me know if you can see it.
Yes.
Let me know that you can see that. Okay, I'm going to take it into a slideshow from the beginning. All right, how is that? Can you see that first page?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. So make sure you're all with me. All right, so let me just launch right into it so that I respect everybody's time, and there's time for questions and answers. Oops. I went right to the bottom. I don't want to be that quick. Let me go all the way up to the top. It's not that many slides, so don't get nervous, and I'll go through them one at a time. And, okay, now we just need to go down. Okay. Just overview of Tropical Storm Isaias. Started as a hurricane when it hit our territory, it was a major storm. We had wind gusts of over 65 miles per hour and rain in some areas of 4 to 7 inches. We serve 1.1 million customers in our territory, and approximately 800,000 customers were impacted. That included a number of transmission and subtransmission line trips, and the majority of these were tree-related. I don't know if everyone at home who's watching can see the screen, so I will just give the statistics as well, which was 161 transmission and subtransmission issues. We also had approximately 400 distribution circuits locked out, which amounts to about 25% of our total circuits. And a lockout affects every person that served on that circuit. Again, here's some statistics about specific damage to our equipment. Over 2,800 crossarms were damaged, 736 poles, 666 transformers, and 82 miles of wire and cable. This was extraordinary damage. It was the second worst damage we've ever experienced in our company's history, second only to Hurricane Sandy. We had 700 road closures, 12,000 hazards, 8,800 locations of tree damage, and over 2,800 critical facilities impacted, including 39 circuits quarantined. And just for your benefit, let me explain what a quarantined circuit means. When there is significant damage to a circuit, we may implement a quarantine process. And this means that we electrically isolate an entire circuit and repair it from beginning to end, and then put the entire circuit back into service. This is safer and a more efficient means of restoration. Most important, I want to put the emphasis on safety, because if we have crews working further down the line, they could be electrocuted, as well as the public. So the whole circuit has to be shut down, worked top to bottom. We had 39 circuits, as I mentioned, quarantined in our entire territory. Just to give you an idea of what 82 miles of wire looks like, if you were to drive from Tom's River all the way to Maristown, that would equate to approximately 82 miles of wire, and that was just one piece of our story. I wanted to give you some specific information about Summit. We serve over 9,000 customers in Summit, approximately 9,196. Of that amount of customers, 7,609 customers were affected on August 4. We had 217 spans of wire down in Summit alone, extensive tree damage, 13 hazard orders, 193 separate outage orders. Now, that's not the number of customers. That's the number of different outages on various circuits that had to be worked to restore all the customers. As I mentioned, we had seven quarantine circuits and four poles down. Now, to give you another idea of the number of hazards, this is what the hazard chart looked like. And if you look on the right side of the screen and you see all those red dots, that's the number of hazards in our area. The outline of the white, that's JC Penel territory. Cutting down right through the middle, that's PSENG territory. So all those red dots in our territory equated to a single hazard. This also seems to line up with the tree density in New Jersey. And again, this was a tree storm. The high winds brought down many trees on our equipment. Again, you see our JC Penel territory in the light blue on the right. And if you look to the left, you can see the mass of trees. All of those dots are trees in our area. Less densely treed in this middle portion where PSENG represents. But again, I think it just gives you a good picture. We talk about how the geography is challenging in our JC Penel territory. I think the picture shows it, and I thought that might be helpful. Prior to the storm, our meteorologists are always tracking and providing reports to us. We immediately began to implement assistance from our regional mutual assistance groups. We mobilized 1,800 personnel ahead of the storm. It's also worth noting that crews cannot be released from other states until they're certain that their territory is okay and not in jeopardy, not, you know, not experiencing a lot of damage. Once they're sure of that, then they head to us. After the storm passed through, as much as we anticipated damage, it was far more damage than anyone anticipated. And we, again, we contracted with even more crews, all of our contractors, all nine of our affiliated utilities, and we used the regional mutual assistance group. We had thousands of additional utility workers in our territory working the storm. I thought it would be useful to go through this service restoration process. This is on our website, but I thought for the benefit of everyone who's attending tonight, this is how the process works. Sometimes people are frustrated because their lights are not back on, and they think that we can flip the switch. But we have to follow a process for safety and to do what makes sense. So we start out with damage assessment, which is the first 24 to 48 hours. While we're doing our damage assessment, we're also trying to address the most dangerous conditions. We're then repairing our high-voltage lines and restoring essential functions. And of course, our priorities are hospitals, our critical facilities, and opening up roads. We then repair the main feeder and distribution lines. And then we address the outages based upon the largest number of customers served on a circuit. And one circuit can serve several municipalities. Last to be restored are the individual homes. This is a comparison of our restoration efforts. We do make improvements with every storm that we experience, and operationally, we had much better success than we have had in any other storm. If you see the comparisons here, in Hurricane Sandy, we had, it took us 21 days to restore power. In Irene, 10 days. In Riley Quinn, 11. And in Isaias, 6 days, which was virtually half the time, and we had just as much damage or more than we had in Irene and Riley Quinn. Again, second only to Hurricane Sandy. This was our restoration. This is what it looked like in Summit. On August 4, as I mentioned, you had about 7,600 people that were affected. August 5, we restored 27%. August 6, 51%. August 7, 67%. We were down to 2,451 customers. August 8, we achieved 81% restoration. August 9, we had almost everyone restored, and we worked through the night. And by August 10, everyone was restored. After-action review, this is the most important. We've collected a significant amount of feedback from, through surveys, from customers, from our municipalities. We had meetings with, we had Senate hearings, Assembly hearings, met with the BPU, and we had county OEM meetings where we invited our municipal, some of our municipal officials and our local OEMs. We gathered all that feedback. We're continuing to discuss improvements that we need to make. But some of the ones that we are implementing, we are evaluating our critical facility road opening processes. We are particularly focused on improving our estimated times of restoration. The Board of Public Utilities requires us to provide a global estimated time of restoration within 24 to 48 hours after a storm leaves our territory. Well, when we did that in this storm, it created a lot of alarm, because everyone assumed that they would be the last persons restored. And, you know, unfortunately, with the process that we had in place, we were not able to establish more specific ETRs until a crew was assigned to a particular outage. We are working on that, and we are going to have a much better system where we're going to be providing more specific ETRs for neighborhoods based upon the damage assessment and the number of customers served on a circuit. We're also working with our municipalities and county to review and refine the reporting and prioritization process, working regionally through the county OEM. So that really concludes the presentation. I would like to see if Jackie Espinoza, my colleague, would like to address anything, and I'll stop sharing that portion of my screen. Jackie, did you want to add anything?
Right, you did a great job, Carol. And certainly covered a lot of information. One thing I do want to mention about this storm, you know, you were talking about the weather, and the winds were so strong that we actually had to stand down the crews. So we, you know, we had to stop the restoration efforts in the beginning. That was on August 4 for several hours, because it is just way too dangerous for the line workers to be out there in the bucket trucks. So keep that into consideration, too. You know, the first few hours of the storm that we weren't able to actually get out there and work, just with the safety of our crews. But, yeah, actually, let's open up to some questions. I'm sure there are some questions in the audience, and I do want, you know, I appreciate you guys asking us to come and learning more about what we do, because a lot of times, people don't realize how much is involved behind the scenes and what goes on. And, you know, we always say that we will restore the power as quickly as the safe practices allow. And another thing, actually, I do want to bring this up in case somebody doesn't ask. Sometimes you may see, and it gets very frustrating to a customer, you may see about five trucks stroll by your house before you actually get restored. And because it can be first hazard responder who's assessing the situation, and then it could be a service truck to make it safe. And if a tree is involved, you'll see a tree crew come by. And if telephone and cable are involved, you'll see those trucks roll up. And then you'll get your service truck to come out and actually put up the wires if they replace a pole. You may see a digger truck as well. So there is a lot of coordination. We work very closely with telephone as well. And there's a lot going on. But we do have an excellent group of line workers working with us. The staffing is fantastic. We have great engineers. And it's rough, it's tough, but I've worked many, many, many storms, and it's always a learning situation, too. A lot of different things come up after the storm, and we like, love working with the OEMs, too, and they have great suggestions. So we're working toward improvement. But go ahead, if you want to open up to questions.
I just want to also mention, before I turn over to the councilwoman to manage the questions, the Council President, Marjorie Fox. I want to thank, I want to thank the City of Summit. Your local OEM, your mayor, your council people were collaborative. It was a difficult situation. The communications need to improve from JC Penel directly to our customers. We did the best that we could under, you know, under the circumstances, but we are looking to improve. But they were outstanding, and they were always looking out for the residents. So I think that's really important to mention. And every step of the way, they've been working with us since the storm to voice concerns, take all the feedback from the residents, and bring it back to us to make improvements. So I want to thank you for working with us in that regard. And Council President, would you like to manage the questions? If you want to take them from the council first, or however you'd like to manage it?
You know, I'm going to let the, I'm going to let the members of the public ask questions first. Thank you so much, both Carol and Jackie. And so just a reminder to the members of the public, I'll recognize you one by one. I'm going to ask you to keep your, I'm going to actually time the questions, keep you to under 3 minutes. So if you could please respect that, because we have a number of people here who I think would like to ask questions. So first of all, Jim Bennett, would you like to go ahead, Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Council President. Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and Ms. Bianchi. Ms. Bianchi, my first question is, will a copy of your PowerPoint be available to the public?
I will check.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett. I will definitely check. I did not ask whether we can publish that, but I would be really happy to share that with the mayor, to share with the residents, as long as it's released. I mean, you've all seen it. Anybody could have taken pictures of it. I just need to have approval to share it with the council and your mayor.
Thank you. And now for a proposal, and I'll make the factual basis brief. I listened to the testimony President Jim faculty at the Law and Public Safety Committee of the State Senate on October 19 is to track with your presentation. First, fallen trees accounted for about 70% of the outages. And secondly, there were about 8,800 locations in the JC Penel service territory with tree damage. I lived in Summit through the power outages from Hurricane Rain in August 2000, over that year. I also lived in Germany, because telephone lines are underground and not subject to outage from fall. So I decided to contact my old, again, this research group. I learned that in Germany, the average power outage is 2.3 minutes per customer per year. The research group of distribution lines in Germany are buried and more so in the north, where windstorms are frequent.
Mr. Bennett? Mr. Bennett?
This group has offered to collaborate. Since Germany is far worse. Okay. Will you work collaboration with this group?
Ms. Bianchi, did you hear the question? The connection was kind of bad with Mr. Bennett.
It was bad? I think that the question was, I know that it has to do with underground, undergrounding utilities, and I don't know specifically what the question was. Are, you know, are we going to underground our utilities? Will we work to underground our utilities? Is that basically what you heard?
I think the gist of it is he wanted to know whether that was possible and what the costs would be to do.
I would be really happy to address that. That question comes up often, and, you know, let's face it, some of the neighborhoods are underground. But one of the things I must note is that every neighborhood is fed overhead initially, so you still have that vulnerability. As I said, this issue's come up a lot. The BPU has made a determination, and it's in their BPU orders. There's one from July 2018. I could even read that response that says, "On the issue of placing overhead utility lines..." I could even read that response that says, "On the issue of placing overhead utility lines underground, the BPU staff has reviewed numerous reports and studies on the topic and had discussions with utilities concerning the potential costs of converting overhead lines to underground. All reports and studies concluded that too many variables exist for a reliable cost estimate concerning the conversion to underground utilities. Even the most comprehensive studies put the cost at a median average of over $3 million per mile. Since these costs would be borne by ratepayers or the municipality, staff believes that to the extent conversion of overhead lines would have any meaningful impact on reducing outages, it would be cost prohibitive." So what I will say is that newer neighborhoods of three or more, brand new developments where there are not existing overhead lines are underground. In addition, sometimes municipalities will require developers to place lines underground as part of a redevelopment project. And then those costs are borne by the developers and passed on. So there are projects where there's undergrounding of lines. But basically, it requires scrapping everything above ground and then starting all over and laying the lines underground. So is it something that's out of hand rejected? No, but at this point in time, because of the costs, the Board of Public Utilities views JCPenel as an overhead utility company and they're focused on treating us as such. And that is why they focus on the vegetative management as the best solution to improve reliability. And we can talk a little more about that, but I don't want to make the answer too long.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bianchi. And our next question is Eileen Kelly. Go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, council president. Good evening, Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. Good evening, everyone. And thank you, Ms. Bianchi, Ms. Espinoza, for joining this evening. I have a three-part question, so I'll use the three minutes to go through those three questions and of course, can repeat any of the three. You shared your prioritization process, which was really helpful. How do you denote when a street, for example, is a safety hazard, let's call it a dead end, or residents, you know, wouldn't be unable to exit that street due to a tree blocking the exitway? How do you prioritize that over perhaps, you know, transmission, providing energy to a large number of residents? My second question is around preparedness plans. You talked about some of the changes that you're going to be implementing. What's different post Sandy? I would presume regional coordination with OEM teams would not be something new a decade after Sandy, for example. And the third is really, you know, outside of trees coming down in powerful storms, you know, Summit residents unfortunately are used to minor outages with some consistency. As I'm sure you're aware, just last week, there was one. So my last question's really around the health status of our local infrastructure, which I presume JCPenel owns. What percentage is consistently at risk? And does JCPenel have a plan over the course of this year, next year, to not just repair but replace and upgrade any poor equipment? Thanks so much.
You're welcome. And I will, I will try to tackle those one at a time. With regard to the priority process that you asked about, we, again, not, most of the roads that are being prioritized are the ones where there's no egress or ingress, but are major traffic. So what we do is we coordinate through the county. And there's so many roads that were closed that we take our priorities from the county and that are funneled to them through the OEM. That's how it's supposed to work. And we're working on that process to refine it. And then we manage them every day until we get all the roads opened. I do understand what your concern is about local roads. Maybe it's just a cul-de-sac. Those are, those are important too. But we, again, we work on them in terms of priority. We're, it's kind of a hybrid approach. It's not like, okay, we're going to have every road open before we tackle the restoration. We're trying to figure out on each circuit what, as much as we can get done. But of course, the most critical things or anything that's life and limb is getting done first. And then we're working on those hospitals, those major road openings until we get through all of it. And as I said, you had asked, that kind of segues into the second part, which is what improvements have we made from Sandy? And I think you can see the restoration process itself is considerably shorter. We've learned a lot from that. I think that, you know, you didn't have the accessibility to the external affairs people. There weren't as many of us who are working hand in hand. We're doing OEM reviews annually with our county partners. So definitely, there's always improvements. We're always doing assessments for each storm and we're always getting better. And we still have a way to go, particularly, we learned from this storm with communications have got to improve. With regard to, you said, you mentioned the trees and infrastructure. I think one of the important things I want to emphasize is that we are continuously working on each circuit. We do an evaluation cyclically. We have, we evaluate all of our infrastructure and we make improvements where they're needed. So for instance, if we, we have reliability engineers who study these circuits. And if we see that there's a lot of tree-related damage, we will focus on doing increased vegetative management on those circuits. That's in addition to our four-year cycle of tree work. We also inspect all of our overhead and underground lines every four years. We do pole inspections on a cyclical basis, but with, through a contractor called Osmos. And what else do we do? We do infrared. We use the thermography inspections. And we make improvements continuously. So that is basically the general answer to that. Jackie, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, you know, you covered most of it. But what we do, whenever there's an outage, the linemen do record what caused the outage. So that information is then fed to the engineers who review these reports. And that's their job. Carol mentioned the reliability engineers. And if they find that, you know, there's an area that's experiencing too many outages, they evaluate and they look at all the details. Is it something repetitive? You know, maybe we need to put some animal guards on, lightning arresters, there's all different reasons. So they, they will take a look at that. And if they're experiencing the outages, they will go out and they will pole-by-pole inspection and they take that thermovision camera so they can detect if there could be, you know, something that needed repair that you can't, it's not visible to the eye. So there's a lot that goes behind it and something that they do track. And sometimes when you see a truck come down the road, you're going to see them going up and down the road because they are patrolling and they want to identify what made that fuse operate. And then, like I said, it will filter down to the engineers. Thank you. Great questions.
These are good questions. And I do want to mention that I sat down last year with the mayor and Mike and Amy Karen, as many of you know. And we discussed these outages. We have one circuit that was experiencing a number of outages. That is just one example of how all that information was being looked at by our reliability engineers. And we have seen significant improvement just this year with reliability on that circuit. So again, wherever we see a circuit that we're experiencing, you know, a number of outages, the reliability engineers are taking that, they're analyzing it. And we're looking for specific redress for that circuit. Not just a one-size-fits-all, but what do we need to do to this circuit to make sure that there are fewer outages? So thanks for that question, but I'm going to allow time for some more questions.
Are there any other members of the public? Ryan Felmit, go ahead. Mr. Felmit, you need to unmute yourself.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Ryan Felmit, 57 Madison Ave. I just had a question in regards to response time through the storm. I think it was, you know, pretty well forecasted in advance from, from, you know, what we saw. So do you have any statistics? I mean, I saw the restoration time. But what was, what was the issues in related, in relation to response time of having crews on the ground other than the several hours that the storm occurred? I don't think, I think many of us didn't see trucks for a couple of days. And similarly, was, what kind of outsourcing was used to subcontract non-JCPenel trucks? And was that an issue related to the response time and the preparation to the storm? And then another question is, obviously, there was a lot of municipalities that were experiencing the same thing in New Jersey. How did you prioritize which municipalities got service first? Unless you, unless you think that all were receiving equal and same timing of restoration. I'd just like to know the prioritization. And then lastly, you touched on the BPU. So I'm wondering what sort of efforts have gone on with the BPU in terms of progress made and action-oriented types of things, if that's what, if that's what you were speaking about. And those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felmit. I'll try to address each of those. Response time, as I said, you know, it's not fun for anyone to be out of power for even more than 24 hours. We need our power. We're all home. We're particularly sensitive during COVID. I'm working from home. My children are learning from home. It's a really difficult time when you're out of power. Our response time was considered to be, to be good considering the amount of damage and the number of outages that we had. Again, our entire territory was affected. You know, I think the communication of response time needs to be better in terms of when people will be back so you can plan better. So with that, I would agree with that. In terms of outsourcing for contractors, we did it prior to the storm. Our president, Jim Fagel, had lined up mutual assistance from, you know, our other utilities, from other contractors ahead of the storm. As I had mentioned in part of the presentation, some of those crews can't be released until they see the damage that's impacting their territory. We still have our own crews and we're prepared and we hold those crews. They don't go home. They're waiting. We're all waiting. We're all working. So we were all, all hands on deck prior to the storm hitting. As you know, it came through and it was, it packed a wallop. And you know, the BPU president, Joe Fier, Fier Deliso, had used that exact language. It really packed a wallop for JCPenel territory. He said something along those lines and it really did. And so while the sun came out, I think it might have even been by the end of the day, our work had just begun. And as Jackie, my colleague, had pointed out, we couldn't get up, we could not get our guys safely up in the bucket trucks, our people, until it was safe to do so because the winds continued for a while. In terms of, you know, again, outsourcing for contractors, we didn't sit back. We, again, we continued as we saw the damage to get as many crews as we possibly could. We had local utility, a local utility assist us when they were done with their work. You know, again, Jackie mentioned, if you don't see trucks in your town, they're working on the circuit. The circuits, and that ties into your last question, which was about how do we prioritize the municipalities? Well, we're prioritizing circuits. We're prioritizing the circuits that feed our hospitals, the circuit that's, that feed our, the most customers. These circuits feed multiple municipalities. So it's not a municipality-by-municipality approach. It's a regional approach. And that is why we need our county OEMs to work with us. They're set up to do that. They have quite a challenge. As good as they are, they have quite a challenge because they're getting all the priorities from the Union County municipalities. And they're managing those. Whether, you know, whether a municipality is served by PSCNG or by JCPenel, they're managing all those priorities. They're filtering them to our liaison who is sitting in the OEM, usually pre-COVID, who was working remotely this time. And that liaison, who is not me, but another person, is sending those parties to the Priority Restoration Unit at JCPenel. And we just keep working away, working away until we get everyone restored. As we mentioned, by day five, we had virtually everyone restored. But by day five, patience has run thin. So we can appreciate how you were feeling if you were one of those folks who were restored on August 9th or 10th. And Jackie, anything to add to that?
Carol, I think you covered it all.
And we'll leave, unmute myself. So, all right, we can move on to the next person's question.
Anyone else from the public have any questions? All right. So I don't see any questions from the public. So I'm now going to turn it over if any members of council have questions. Council member Little.
Thank you, council president. And thank you, Carol and Jackie, for being here tonight. I have one comment and one question. So the comment is that I think everyone on this council has also experienced these long power outages. So we've experienced from that side. And we've also experienced it from the side of being the, you know, listening to the residents and trying to be the liaison with them. It's a really fun time to be a council member, as I'm sure it's a really fun time to be a JCPenel rep. And as much communication as possible is really, really helpful for us. As much as you can tell us, as much as information is that you can give us, that you're working on circuits, that you have trucks out, you know, that we can pass on to residents would be really, really helpful. So I'm happy to hear that you're working on that communication piece because the uncertainty of not knowing what's going on when you're without power, I think, is the hardest part. And that's what, that's what's really difficult for residents. And so as much as you can relate to us and to the public, would, you know, I would encourage you to do that because that's really the hardest piece. And the second thing that I wanted to ask was a question. And that is that we often hear from residents that there are out-of-state crews that are coming to the area when we have these big storms, which is great. But that often the crews don't seem to be able, you know, there's a difficulty in communicating with your crews about how the circuits work or where they're supposed to go or things like that. So how does this communication work between the JCPenel Communication Center and these out-of-town crews? And can you just explain how that relationship works when you pull in these crews?
Absolutely. So basically, these out-of-state crews, they either report to the line shop in normal circumstances. We have staging sites as well, which will cut down on the time for restoration. So for example, we had, I think, a total of, it was either, was it six or nine? I'm not sure. But we had three in North New Jersey, one of them, the closest being the Livingston Mall. So basically, we're communicating with them directly with, they're communicating with our line shop. They get their work packet directly from the local dispatcher in the line shop. Everything is reviewed, safety, security, materials are, you know, loaded up on the trucks. They report back to the staging site or wherever they are stationed, whether it's our line shop or the staging site, to get more materials. We have GPS trackers on those out-of-state trucks. They are provided not only the addresses but longitude, latitude. Can mistakes happen? Absolutely. Can they go to the borough instead of the township? When it's, you know, we have a number of municipalities in New Jersey. Can they make a mistake? Yes, that can happen. But there is that communication. They are provided that packet with everything that they need and all the materials they need. And there's constant communication with them. So I wanted to address that piece. And then I wanted to also agree with you that you've really nailed it. It is the communications, it is the information that we as external affairs are able to provide to you. We need to do better with that in terms of getting that information. You can only imagine what it's like in the line shop. And Jackie and I do sit in our respective line shops and we're there from, we're there around the clock. And we're trying to get as much information as possible to feed back to our mayors and our council. But with the improved communications that we're looking to do and that is going to be implemented, better communications should be flowing directly to the customers so that the mayor does not need to fill that role. Because ultimately, the relationship is between JCPenel and the customer. It isn't the mayor and the council's responsibility. But like every responsibility, if, you know, people turn to you because you are always there for them. With every issue that comes up, they come to you because you are the ones who will fight the hardest for them. But at the same time, we, we want to keep their lights on. So we want to work directly with them, give them better information. We have a lot of resources. We have that interactive map. We have the 24/7. But in the storm, with the magnitude of damage and outages, it just wasn't enough. It wasn't good enough. And the hardest thing for the residents, our customers, your residents, was not knowing when your lights, their lights are going to be coming back on. How do we plan? Do we go to a hotel? Do we make arrangements for our elderly? That's hard when you don't know what day you're going to be restored. So we hear you all loud and clear on that and we are going to make improvements in that regard. Jackie, anything you want to add to that?
I just want to make sure you had that covered, that our focus does want to be on the customer so that you will receive less phone calls. If we get the information to them, they won't be, you know, coming to you for as much. Of course, we're going to continue to communicate with you. But if we provide, you know, the end user the information, we're hoping that would be, you know, that's going to just make everyone's life a little bit more less stressful. Great job, Carol.
Mayor Riddick, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I do. Carol, we've had several conversations, obviously, throughout the crisis. And then since then, I've been in a couple of meetings with you and your bosses. And they've been very, very fruitful in terms of what you plan to do. And one of the issues that we know, and it's the dreaded C-word, I used to say to my kids, communication. One of the problems we've had is people calling the dispatch, which in Summit is Mountain Valley. And it's not at the police station, but it's at a dispatch station. And then they say, okay, one wire's down. And then someone from the dispatch has to call JCPenel and answer 10 and answer 10 or 11 questions about what the problem is, and it's time-consuming. And when there's a very massive issue going on, the dispatch people are overwhelmed because they don't want to hang on the phone, talking to JCPenney with 10 or 11 questions when the other call behind them could be somebody who was run over by a car unrelated to the to the power outage. So, and we've had this conversation and you know it. And I know that you and your boss, Jim Fagel, are working on this because to, in order to streamline this, to make it a better system for us to be more effective and communicative with you and with our residents. So I want to thank you for having had this conversation with us. And I, I know you understand it, Jackie, I haven't spoken with you, but I presume you get it as well. I'm just want to say publicly, your bosses need to get it too. You get it, and I appreciate that, but this needs to be something that's, this is, this is what needs to be done. And we can provide in Summit, we can provide the human capital to help you, to help dispatch in these moments of crisis. But JCPenney needs to streamline this process. It cannot be this long, 10 questions of what needs to be, what the problem is. Because initially, the person who called 911 explained the problem, and now that now another person has to call JCPenney and say, here's a problem, and they've got to ask, answer another 10 questions. That's just not acceptable. I know you know it, and I truly appreciate your being here tonight as well, Jackie. But this is what your bosses need to hear.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, we have talked about this, and I've been with your Mountain Valley Communications as well. When it comes to the non-life and limb reports, this is not an excuse. I know it must be really frustrating, but we are trying to get as much information so that we have all of the materials and the crews that we need. It might involve more than one crew. So I know that's frustrating, but we do have to ask certain questions. But when it comes to the, I understand the 911 real life and limb emergencies, that is something that I'm, you know, working with our team to say, this is what we really want to streamline because we understand your frustration with that particularly. Like, look, you've got a live wire down and you just want to get a crew there, and you don't want to be kept on the phone when you've got a million other things going on. So we appreciate that, and we're bringing that back. And Jackie, you're another set of ears. You heard it here. She'll be bringing that back too.
Yeah, because our OEM works hard, you know, but they only have so much in terms of of their wherewithal. Now, I don't mean intelligence or anything like that, but they only have so many man-hours and so much time that they can bring to this.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree more. And I want to also mention, and I am remiss in not mentioning, your emergency responders, Don Nelson, Chief Evers, really fantastic to work with, your chief, Artalotti, just amazing. They worked so hard, and they were wonderful partners. They were very patient, considering the things that were going on. But also, we, you know, again, it doesn't end when the storm ends. I worked, I continue to work with your OEM, you know, to get people powered back. Sometimes what happens is there'll be a service line ripped off a house that has to be repaired. And as you might recall, Mayor, we worked really closely together to coordinate our meter department with an apartment building.
Right, on an avenue. You did a great job there.
Yeah, so that's what we do. I mean, that's just an example of like what my role is and Jackie's, is that we're there to really help the municipality. And if there's something that's really important, we'll work with you, we'll help coordinate things. So we're really happy to be a partner with you on that.
I appreciate that. I really appreciate your accessibility. But I think everyone on this, at this meeting, wants you to get the message to your boss.
And it is. And then we were talking about it again today. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Hairston, you've had a question?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Carol and Jackie. Very, very thorough. And I really appreciate all the efforts that's been put in, not just at this storm, but even beforehand. I'm actually going in a little bit of a different direction and wondering, what have you all thought about the impact of generators? How is that impacting at all finding, putting Band-Aids on situations when the residents have already gotten their power back up? And I just wondered at all, it's actually a noise pollution problem for us as residents. But I was wondering if it is changing how you're thinking about looking at infrastructure?
Um, Councilwoman, I think that if, I'm not entirely sure of the question, other than to say, we're not, we're not looking to do less because we're relying on generators. I hope that makes sense. We're not putting the onus back on the resident or the customer to say, you must get a generator. That is a personal choice. I do not have one. I choose not to have one. I worry about backfeed from generators. I mean, let's face it, they serve a purpose. There's always pluses and minuses, and everybody has to make their own individual choice with the generators. But in terms of how we, you know, improve reliability, we are not looking at generators as passing the buck and not doing our job. Because really, ultimately, what we want to do is have the best reliability that we can and the best restoration. And whether or not you have a generator does not factor into those two, those two things. Jackie, what's your experience with generators?
And you have to un- Yes, I do. Thank you. No, it's, it's not like we're going to change the restoration process because some homes have generators. And if we hear it, actually, we do get a concern when we hear the generators. I mean, it is a safety hazard too, if they're not hooked up properly. So we do send out messaging, communication to all the towns to talk about the, you know, safety of generators and make sure they're hooked up properly. And you should have a licensed electrician properly hook up the generator so that it doesn't present a hazard to the line workers. Because that, the generator is not hooked up properly can actually put stronger voltage onto the line, and that is definitely an issue. And one thing, Carol, I do want to mention is that we're just finishing up what's called our Reliability Plus program. So we invested, was $97 million into the distribution infrastructure, and we're just finishing up that work. Everything has to be completed at the end of December. So a lot of, you know, in addition to what our regular maintenance says, we did so much on the system. It was fantastic. We have trip savers. It's a new technology, extra tree trimming, you know, flood mitigation projects at the substations. There's a slew of things that I'm sure Carol Pius has gone over what, you know, we did in your town. But so that's extra, you know, just hardening the distribution, distribution system. And when I say distribution system, that's the lines that are from the substation that go right to your home, not the transmission, but right from, you know, that you see out on the roads. So a lot of work being done.
Yeah, and I'm really glad to have you here, Jackie, because I forgot to mention that. That was a really important part of what I wanted to tell everyone was that, you know, what Jackie was talking about was this enhanced reliability program that we did in 2019 and 2020 that we're finishing up, that was approved by the Board of Public Utilities. And in Summit, in addition to our four-year cycle of vegetative management, we, we also did tree trimming on an additional 18 miles in Summit alone, and that was in addition to our four-year cycle. And again, everyone loves our trees. We love the trees, but they're not always compatible with our wires. So if anyone is going to plant trees by wires, we have recommendations. It's on our website. I can work with the committee, the council, on recommendations for trees near wires if you feel like you need to have them in that location. But again, we're, the Board of Public Utilities has recognized that that's the greatest investment that we can make as an overhead utility company. And recognizing the impacts of Hurricane Isaias and knowing that more storms are coming, they have approved additional investments in vegetative management, more so than what we've already done because it has had a great impact on our reliability.
Councilmember O'Sullivan, I believe you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thank you, Carol, and thank you, Jackie. You just addressed part of what I was going to say regarding vegetative management. But I found First Energy's strategic plan that was published in 2019 very interesting to read. And part of the, you know, we can beat down on the communication problem, but, and I know you're going to address it. But they did write about it in 2019 and trying to get information to the customers directly, instead of going through governing bodies. You know, so this is two years old that they've been trying to do this. And one of the core values that the CEO, Charles Jones, wrote about, his first core value was to create an effortless customer experience. And I think it's far from it. I think every time there's a power outage, the onus is on the customer to report the outage instead of JCPenney just knowing about the outage. It's stressful enough when there is an outage that we have to go find a number to call or text or something. On a positive note, in the report, they talk about the massive investments that First Energy is making. $1.2 billion per year to improve the reliability of transmission, of the transmission system. $1.7 billion per year to improve distribution infrastructure. So those are great numbers. I just, I just wish we could see evidence of it. If you could point us to what infrastructure that we could say, the only thing I could find was the Martinsville substation that went online in June of this year. And that was able to keep power on for 9,200 customers during the, during this storm. I mean, 9,200 customers from one substation, it's just, it's just not enough. There were so many people without power. But all this investment, we don't know where it goes. You know, what are we building? What are we paying for so that we know the next time that there is a storm, we can say, well, they've, they've made improvements to this and fortified the systems so that we don't have it. But inevitably, there will be another multi-day outage. We don't know what the cause will be, but we can predict it. It's going to happen next year, you know, maybe even this year, maybe even this winter. So, you know, obviously, the communication has to be better. One thing I would say, because part of this storm, you know, it's, Mother Nature has, has her way. The trees on private property cause a lot of this damage to the infrastructure. If there are way, because, you know, the last time we had our trees trimmed was probably two years ago. Is there a way for JCPenney to incentivize the people in these, you know, tree communities to say, hey, reminders? Hey, have you had your trees trimmed lately? Or incentivize them with, with credits on their bill and say, hey, look, you're, you're, by trimming your trees, you're helping the community, you're helping your neighbors, you're helping people way down the line on the distribution network. So it's just a way to partner with, with the whole, the whole customer base and get everybody on the same page. But that's it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman. I'd love to address that. So first, let me talk about the communication of outages. You may know or you may not know, but we did file an application in August for smart meters. The BPU, the Board of Public Utilities, has to review and approve that for us to then install them. So we have a plan. We have a firm plan that we put together. Some people say, why did it take you so long? There was a moratorium on smart meters. You know, the Board of Public Utilities tries to be careful. They don't want things to be implemented till they're sure it's safe and effective. So they were studying other, other programs that were happening. You know, other states had approved these smart meters before. New Jersey did, and so they've been watching that. And then they lifted that moratorium. And as soon as they lifted that moratorium, we filed our plan. So those smart meters are coming, and it's going to give us a significant amount of information about outages when someone's out of power, when they're restored. So that is coming. But in the meantime, as Jackie and I were talking about, we're going to be improving our communications. I know we talked about it in 2019. We talk about it a lot, but we have, every, as I said, we're constantly improving. You know, our websites improved, the use of External Affairs folks have improved. There have been improvements, but we need to do more, and we recognize that. You had talked about the trees, and I wanted to just emphasize that that is a collaboration. We will do the trees in the right of way. We need permission. The Board of Public Utilities requires us to get the permission of those customers. And we appreciate, we've had, I believe I was told tonight, I talked to my forester today. It's like a 95% approval rating, like in other words, the customers have, in 95% of the cases, agreed to have the trees because they choose reliability over trees hanging over the wires. We don't want to take down the trees unless we need to, but if we're going to do tree trimming and remove 30% of the tree that's endangering our wires, we're going to need to take that tree down because we don't want to jeopardize the health of that tree. And otherwise, healthy tree will no longer be healthy. So we do need that buy-in. We need, we need residents to take care of their trees. If they're unhealthy, it's their responsibility. But we also need their agreement to take the trees down that are jeopardizing our wires. It's a buy-in from everyone. And again, there are trees that you can plant under wires if you so choose, but they can't grow above our wires. I think that's what I wanted to cover, and I think Jackie wanted to add something. I saw you-
Yes, and you brought up some great points, and I'm glad you mentioned, like, hey, what's happened? I heard this in 2019 that we want this seamless approach. Believe it or not, it's a huge undertaking, and we're almost done with that whole process where the computer systems will be totally upgraded and integrated. And we use the GIS system with our power management system. So that was a huge investment, and it was also, you know, something that they really had to make sure which systems they wanted to use. So it's almost done. The project is coming to the ending stage where, and I can't wait for this, trust me. I'm very excited about this, and I can't wait to see what it brings and how it's going to help us with everything, all facets. So I'm glad you mentioned that, and I'm hoping like in, it won't be at the end of 2020, but in 2021, towards the end, I think that whole project will be implemented. So thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that. And then along with smart meters, which will take a while to do, that communication to the end user is definitely, you'll see that improvement. So, great question. Thank you.
So I've got Councilmember Vartan, and then we'll go to the mayor after that.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be relatively quick. Thank you, Carol and Jackie. So two questions. The first is, does JCPenney have any sort of program to reimburse customers for lost food or medication resulting from a power outage?
I was waiting for your second question. That's okay. Which would you like? Well, I'll answer that one. We did not reimburse customers for lost food. That is typically passed on. That has been like a utility-wide approach. I do understand there's other, another utility that did change that historical approach to reimburse customers. But it has always been accepted by the BP that that is something that the, that, you know, if we don't, we don't create the situation, we don't create the storm, that the individual customers will go to their homeowner's insurance policy to seek reimbursement for food loss. So, you know, at this time, we did not do that.
Okay. And then, and then the second question is, sort of in line with, with what Councilman O'Sullivan said. You know, I think, would the end goal, I guess, be shorter times for restoration? Or is there actually hope that the investments being made will increase resiliency? So there's fewer outages altogether? I am hoping, you know, for some idea or some sense of how the success of those investments is being measured so that we can, you know, so that we can see it.
So the answer is both, but most certainly upfront, we want to have the better resiliency. And I don't think that I fully answered Councilman O'Sullivan's question because he had talked about communicating those reliability projects. And that is something that we're discussing internally. Look, I began, I came here in 2019, and we do, we're doing so many good things that people don't know about. That one of the things we're talking with our Communications Department is, it's great that we're telling people that we're making investments, but they, you know, we have sophisticated customers, we have sophisticated leaders of our municipalities. They want to know specifically, what are you doing in my town? What are you doing in my region? How is this helping me? So we're trying to promote more of that. Like, I will tell you, Councilman, you mentioned the Martinsville substation. That wasn't something that we were even putting press releases out about. Yeah, and so I had asked the question, did this substation help in this storm? And then the engineers went back and looked into it and said, this is how it helped. Now, that's a great story, but we have a lot of those stories, and we need to tell those stories because it's not just about promoting ourselves. We need to do the things that we're not doing right. We need to do better. But the things we are doing right, we ought to let you know about it. So we need to do a better job of that. Shorter times of restoration, yes, we still, you know, as you saw with, from the charts, we're getting better and better. we're getting better and better with each storm. And again, our reliability is better. The vegetative management, you know, again, you saw all the that this was a tree storm. There was a lot of damage from trees. But without the vegetative management program, it would have been a lot worse. And I will tell you that there were primarily trees that were off the right of way that impacted our territory in this storm. And Mayor, I think that you've been waiting patiently as well.
Yes, that's what I want to talk about with my friend, Councilmember Bowman. One of the things we've talked about is that with the shade, talking about things that are specific to our town, right, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, council committee, is willing to work with your forester, who's Rob Waldron, right, who was your predecessor, to to come with JCPN and look at residences and their homes and at their trees and say, okay, this is not in the right way, but it's got a potential problem. Now, I understood the city and JCPN L are not going to take over the cost of trimming the tree, but giving advice to these residents. And I, my understanding, Steve, right, is that the Shade Tree Advisory Committee is willing to work with JCPN L to help get this word out to residents. Because residents don't want to lose their trees either. They're probably much more willing to to, you know, trim a tree than lose a tree or have it fall in their home. But we can, we can do this with JCPN L, and I think we're willing to do it. We started this conversation. And the Shade Tree Advisory is willing to do it, and I think we set up a time sometime after Thanksgiving to work with Rob Walton and and the Shade Tree Advisory to try to get this organized. Am I correct, Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Mayor. Yes, without a doubt. It's a two-step process. It's number one, educating the people what to look for in a damaged or overgrown tree. I think Councilman O'Sullivan even talked about how it's been two years since he trimmed his trees. I think so many people, you know, see a tree, they it grows, it gets overgrown, and then come the storm, gets a little heavy, and then the damage is done. I think it's it's got to be in concert with everybody, the homeowner and the utility to identify the tree and then have the, you know, is it something that JCPN L would be willing to, you know, pitch in or even work with the tree trimming services to to lower the cost, I guess, to the individual homeowner?
I think we should make a pitch to the major tree companies in this community to do this as a service, a discounted rate.
Well, we talked about that one month.
I know, and let's let's push on that.
And I like what I'm hearing because I had a lot many conversations with our forestry group, including Rob Walton. And one of the things he wanted me to share with all of you is that, again, there's been a lot of support from the BP to do more of this. Really, what happens with our tree management program, as many of you may know, is we have our planner go out and mark the trees that are appropriate for removal. And then what we have to do, we work with the individual customers, the homeowners, to the owners of the tree, to say, are you okay with this tree coming down? This, you know, explaining what the issues are. And as I said, we usually get buy-in. Where we have often experienced problems is where you have a committee or municipality who doesn't want the trees to come down, and they interfere in that process. They get between the customer and JCPN L and say, we don't want the trees down, we want them to stay. I do not, we do not have that problem in Summit, and I'm very thankful to all of you for that because we are seeking even greater collaboration. We have new technology that we're implementing to better assess and address tree growth. So what we do, and this goes back to Councilman O'Sullivan's question about the four-year cycle of growth. Can we do it more frequently? The answer is yes, we are going to do it more frequently where we have significant issues. So we're going to identify where we're having the tree issues, and we're going to do more than just our four-year cycle where we have those issues. But I also want to mention that our four-year cycle is designed to address four years of growth. So it's not that we trim the tree and we say, oh, in four years, it's going to be completely over the wires. What we do is we plan for that four years of growth. But we also realize with the new technology, we can do an even better job in planning. In addition, we're, there's just so many different things we're doing in forestry that I don't want to talk about it all night long. But I do know that our forestry group wants to do so much more. We've, we're completing our IIP program now. We are finishing up in Summit, actually. We're working in Summit. We've been working in Summit. And I talked to the head of the IIP program tonight, and he said, I wish I just had more ability to, I just want to do more, and we need approval to do more. And so we're all in, and it sounds like you are as well, and we're happy to work with the Shade Tree Committee to help educate the customers, your residents.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of council? Okay, I think that wraps up all of our questions. Thank you so much, Carol and Jackie, for coming tonight and for answering everyone's questions. I think this was very productive, and we look forward to ongoing conversations about some of these issues that were discussed tonight. So.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, to all of you, Mayor, Council, or your staff. And I just really would be remiss not to say congratulations to Paul and to Aaron. Paul was wonderful to work with, and Aaron, you are as well. And so I look forward to continuing the relationship with everyone. And thank you to my my friend and my colleague Jackie for joining me. She's more experienced than I am.
Thank you. She did a great job.
All right. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks. So we're now going to move on to our second presentation of the evening. Parking Services Manager Rita McNanny is going to do a demonstration of the new permitting system. Thank you, Rita.
Sure. One second, please. Oh, wait. Share my screen first.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of common council and to the viewing audience. As the Council President just stated a little while ago, Summit residents are required to apply for a parking and disposal permit. It's a dual permit system to park in our municipal managed parking lots, but also mainly to gain access to the transfer station that's so valuable here in the City of Summit. I am pleased to present this demonstration on an upgrade of our permit system. On October 23rd, the city launched the upgrade to our permit system. And every resident that had a permit in 2019 received an email. This is what the email looked like. The first step that a resident must do is in this email is to copy the temporary password. For security reasons, when we transferred over the data onto a new system, we have to create new passwords. So the first step is to copy, highlight this temporary password and hit Ctrl C on your keyboard to copy it. Then you go into the permanent parking portal, and you click on that link. You get this page, and here is where you paste the temporary password by hitting Ctrl and V on your keyboard. Now you have to create a new permanent password. The passwords must be a minimum of eight characters long. They must include an uppercase character, a lowercase character, one number, and a special character. And then once you put it in both locations here, and then you confirm it, you click on change password. The next screen you'll come to is basically where you start the process of buying permits. What I ask every resident to do that to assist them during this process is to click on the help on the left-hand side. What that does, it opens up into a separate window all the step-by-step instructions for whatever permit they're trying to purchase. So with that, they could toggle back and forth for assistance. But I'm going to show you the step-by-step and how easy it is to apply for a permit. So the first thing you would do is click on add permit. Now, permits are attached to the license plate of the vehicle for our license plate recognition systems for the transfer station and also for parking enforcement. So the first thing residents need to do is add their vehicles. So one at a time, we click on add vehicle. That brings up this screen, and where this is where you add your vehicle information. You can separate if you have more than one vehicle or numerous vehicles in your household, you could separate it by who the main driver of that vehicle is. So you can say that, okay, this is Pat. Pat drives this car. You enter the plate. When entering the plate, it's all numbers and letters, whatever included in the plate, no dashes, no spaces, especially with specialty plates. Sometimes on the side, they'll have two little like CC, conquer cancer. You have to include the CC prior to the numbers and the additional letters in the plate. The state, obviously, it defaults to New Jersey, but if you are have L state plates, you need to specify that to make the model, the color, and the year. And then you click save. You continue to add each individual vehicle that you want to purchase a permit for. So then after you add your vehicles, here, there's going to be a dropdown list, and it's going to list all those vehicle plates that you just put in. So your first vehicle, I want to get a permit for that. The options would be either to pick the 2020, 2021 resident permit for $10, or the senior permit for $5. So there's a dropdown list, and they're in numerical order, so you click the permit that you wish. Now we need the vehicle documentation added into the system. This way, we have to verify that the person that's applying for the permit actually lives in Summit and has, they pay taxes to the City of Summit. Some people have a Summit mailing address, but they physically don't live in the parameters of the City of Summit. So that's why we test, we check every registration for the validity of the address that they true, in fact, live in Summit, and also that it's a valid registration. So you would choose your file and where on your computer you have stored a copy of the registration, and then you upload it. So that would be, that would come up here in red and show that you attached the file. If the vehicle is leased, after you upload the registration, you have to upload proof of insurance. The reason for that is, is your registration, if it's leased, does not have your summon address on it. We then link the insurance card with the VIN number to the VIN number that's on the registration. We verify your address, so then again, we can approve your permit. If you are applying for a senior permit, you need to upload your driver's license as well for proof of age. So once you upload any of the documentation that is required, then you just click Add to Cart. And here's your shopping cart. Now, for ease of and simplicity, if you have multiple vehicles, all you need to do is click Add Permit. You go to that dropdown list that I described before. You select your next permit, your next plate, and then you add your permits. And then you add your documentation, and now this is your shopping cart. So the next step would be to add your credit card. So you click on Add Credit Card. You get the credit cards screen. You add your credit card, your expiration date, and your security code, and click Continue. So this is an example of what the cart will look like, but then you could have multiple here, multiple permits in one cart, so you have one transaction on your credit card. You have to accept the terms here by clicking this blue box. That is authorizing the City of Summit once they're approved that your credit card will be charged for the purchase of the permits. And then you click Buy. Next screen is just a offer confirming your payment, and you just want to make sure you want to continue, and you just press yes. So then you have successfully applied for your permits. You will see this screen on the software, and then you also get a confirmation email sent to you saying that your application has been received. The city is reviewing it. And again, if for some reason there is documentation that wasn't uploaded clearly enough, or it's missing something, you will get a detailed email back explaining what's missing and how to upload that again. But then if everything's there that is required, you will then, your permit will be approved, you'll receive this email that your permit has been approved, and your payment is being processed at the amounts of the payment. And that's basically the process. I do want to mention to date that we have approved over a thousand permits. We have about a nine hundred more to review. So people have successfully put on the system and requesting permits. However, anyone that needs assistance can contact Parking Services by calling 5908-522-5100, or email us at parking@cityofsummit.org. Due to COVID-19, anyone wishing to pay by cash, check, or credit card, not through the online system, will need to make an appointment with our office. We will gladly assist anyone who needs help with this new process. And at this time, if there's any questions, I'd like to take questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of council or members of the public? Councilmember Bowman, go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you, Rita. I didn't know I took that many steps when I renewed it. It seemed like that many. But but thanks for the tutorial, and I, you know, I found it very easy to do. So kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President, and I just want to say again, thank you, Rita. I know this was a long process to get this new system up and running. I found it easy, just like Steve said, I found it very easy to do it. I know you worked on Saturday to approve a lot of permits, so thank you for that extra time as well. And, you know, it was, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. People are getting approved very, very easily. So it's not just me and Steve. Other people are finding it easy, too.
Yes, and there are people that don't want their information on the internet, and we totally understand that. But due to COVID, we're making appointments, and people are in our office every day, and we're processing them internally so that they feel safe. Some people, they do not even want to come out of their house due to COVID. We've worked with them either email, or they've mailed a check to us, and we're processing those as well. So any way the customer would like to do it, we're more than happy to help them with it, but it is a much easier process. Yes.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Rita. You know, I've been bugging you about how hard this permit process was. And so I'm very, very pleased that it's working well. I was doing a wedding in the atrium outside, actually, in the courtyard on Saturday at 4:30, and you were busy at work in your office. So I really appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Vartan, go ahead.
Just to echo, thanks for all the work that went into upgrading the system. Thanks for doing the presentation tonight. And I also just wanted to point out that typically, your office would bring in several temps to process all of these permits. And because of the upgrade to the system, that's not necessary, because in addition to being easier for residents, it's also much easier on the back end for you guys. So, you know, just just another example of how an investment in improving technology and how that interacts with the residents is actually saving money as well. So, thank you.
Any other comments from members of council? Thank you so much, Rita. This was really helpful.
My pleasure.
Thank you for all your work on this project.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. Thanks. Yep, of course. Okay, so we are now moving on to public comments. So at this point in the meeting, we welcome comments from any member of the public about issues that are not on tonight's agenda. And whenever you read from a prepared statement, if you could please provide that statement to the clerk at our licitise cityofsummit.org, and I'm going to ask the people, because it is getting late, try to limit themselves to three minutes. And please state your name and your address when I call on you. Are there any members of, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lumelo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rich Lumelo, and I live on 15 Fernwood Road. I want to start by congratulating Susan Hairston on her win last night to keep her common council seat. You had a clear and decisive win, and for that, you should be commended. I was pleased to see, as I read articles about your candidacy, that there was seemingly an absence of negative commentary directed your way, and I think that's the way it should be, which is why I want to address the council as a whole. I've been extremely disappointed by the lack of civility and the level of discourse in Summit through this election cycle and the relative silence of the council. To be clear, I'm fully aware of how nasty and mean-spirited things can be in Washington and Trenton. This is Summit, and it should be different here. Regardless of our political differences, we should all be pulling our oars in the same direction. Instead, I saw a constant stream of negative comments directed at Councilwoman Hairston's Republican opponent, Eileen Kelly. There were negative and aggressive comments posted on her Facebook page, community pages, even the creation of a YouTube page, which, you know, all set up for the purpose of denigrating her qualifications. People in town, some willing to put their names on the comments and some not, questioned that she only had 12 years of experience in the workplace, only 12 years of experience. She didn't own a home. She doesn't have children. She'd only lived here for a year and a half. I'm not sure when we introduced purity tests into our criteria for fitness to run for office, especially given we've had other council members with similar backgrounds. And also, we are represented in Congress by somebody who moved to our district only a month before announcing his candidacy. Also of concern was a Facebook group that was created called Transparency in Summit Politics, which, far from being what it was advertised to be, was seemingly set up solely to be a forum for attack pieces and comments on Ms. Kelly's candidacy, most of them without attribution. The site used a town logo in its banner to give it an air of legitimacy, and I was surprised that nothing was done by the mayor, by the council, by anybody in position of authority to make clear that the site was not sanctioned by the town. One of the commenters on the site went into the Summit Happenings page, confronted a fellow resident, and made violent threats against his family. And while some expressed relief that he or she, clearly using a fake identity, had been outed, the reality is that no such thing happened. That person, not a bot, was able to smear a candidate with impunity and anonymity. To be clear, to run for office is to put oneself in the glare of the spotlight, and there's nothing wrong with vetting a candidate's ideas and background, et cetera. But to have a YouTube channel and various other Facebook pages created simply to attack someone in Summit is shocking to me. I listened to a town hall call a few weeks ago, where one member stated that he would rather have his car stolen than hear about political lawn signs being taken down, because he viewed that as an affront on democracy. Given that, as well as everything I point out above, the silence on this front was alarming to me. The bottom line is, we're all neighbors, and we need to begin acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Brown, would you like to speak?
Hi, yes, thank you, Beverly Brown, 221 Ken Place Boulevard. I appreciate the comments. I don't have a prepared statement, so there's nothing to email. I appreciate the previous comments that I heard. And while I'm not going to repeat any of them, I'd like to support the comments that were just made by this gentleman. I've lived in town all my life, and it's been a dark day in this town to hear and see some of the vitriol that has gone on during the recent campaign. And I would encourage all of the council members to truly act as leaders and stop it. Stop it around here. I would also like to remind council that, and I tried to find this online, and I couldn't, only a few years ago, we didn't have lawn signs. We didn't have campaign lawn signs, right? And I see, I see you laughing, right, Mayor? And they were, what?
That's not accurate.
Oh, we've always had lawn signs for campaigns?
Yeah.
We have?
Many years.
Okay, for me, well, I guess maybe I'm, maybe I'm showing my age. But I thought I remembered a time when there, there weren't campaign lawn signs. But if there were, then so be it. I'll stand corrected. But what I would encourage the mayor and council is maybe think outside the box, and ban campaign lawn signs, and only have lawn sign, campaign signs in, you know, designated public places. That could go a long way to try and unify the community. Just a thought. Thanks for the time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other, any other members of public who'd like to comment? Okay. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. And we're going to move on to ordinances for hearing. So tonight, we have an ordinance on the Development Regulations Ordinance, which we are going to be tabling this. The planning board is making some changes to the ordinance, which will be introduced at the meeting on November 16. And then we will be holding a hearing on December 1. So at this point, I'd like to call for a motion to table this ordinance hearing.
I'd like to move the ordinance to be tabled. There's a few reasons, as Council President said, that we are doing this. As I've stated in previous council meetings, we've been going through this process of going through the DRO that we passed last December for the last year. We had a, what we thought was a final version, but we realized that some notice needed to go out, and there was a change that needed to be made. So we, there was not determination by the planning board that it was consistent with the master plan, which is a requirement for this ordinance. So we're going to be tabling it and reintroducing this ordinance. So I move that we table this ordinance.
And I second that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and the ordinance is tabled. And now we'll move on to resolutions. So first, we have a finance resolution. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is number 7460. It authorizes the transfer of funds within the operating budget from accounts with a balance to accounts with insufficient funds. This transfer is due in large part to an employee's salary, switching from one department to another. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
All those, oh, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
It requires a roll call vote.
Oh, this is a roll call. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, could you give us a roll call,
You're muted.
I apologize. Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Ms. Hairston?
Hi.
Ms. Little?
Hi.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Mr. Vartan?
Hi.
President Fox?
Hi. Okay, the motion carries. So moving on, we have, I guess, a number of capital projects and community services resolutions. Councilmember Little, would you like to get started with cap one?
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects, number one, is resolution number 7442, and it's to authorize a two-year contract extension for professional landscaping services. In 2019, the city awarded a bid for the landscaping services to Genofrio and Son. That contract included an option for a two-year extension, and the city is very happy with the services and would like to extend, and would like to exercise that option to extend the contract for two years. So I move this resolution.
And I second it. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the opposed? Motion carries. For Capital Projects, number two, we are going to push this resolution to the next meeting on November 16. So would you like to go ahead and do Capital Projects, number three, Councilmember Little?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Capital Projects, Resolution Number Three, is number 7352, and this is to award a bid for the 2020 sanitary sewer cleaning and TV inspection. As most of you know, that this is an ongoing project of maintaining our sewer systems, which are crucial to the enjoyment of our residents. And this is a project that's ongoing. This is to award the bid for the ongoing sections, which is, has been going on in the Blackburn Road area. And I would like to move this resolution for approval.
I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, this is, this is an area where we, this is an ongoing project, as Councilmember Little said, and it is actually something that saves us money in the long run, because we find problems before they become big problems. You know, leaks and infiltration and things like that. And part of it is also part of, it's part of a maintenance program. So this is one way. We have an aging sewer infrastructure, so this is very important. So I fully support this program. So any other comments, or, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to cap four, Councilmember Little?
Thank you. Capital Projects, Resolution Number Four, is number 7461, and this is to authorize continuation of the Parklet Program. As many of you know, we have been doing what we can to support our downtown businesses and restaurants during this period of COVID and the restrictions on our businesses. And one of the very successful ways that we've been able to do that is by expanding the Parklet Program and allowing the restaurants to expand their outdoor eating options. Because of the popularity of this program, and at the request of many of the residents, of the restaurants and SCI, we are proposing to continue this Parklet Program through the winter for as long as it's possible to do so, given the weather and safety considerations. So we would be continuing the authorization for the Parklet Program through November 30 of next year, and hope that we have a mild winter, and that our restaurants will be able to continue to use their outdoor spaces that have been very well received by both the businesses and residents. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Councilmember O'Sullivan, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to commend ECS and Councilwoman Little, Councilwoman Naidoo, Parking Services for this Parklet Extension. It just further demonstrates our commitment to our business community and the vibrancy of our downtown. So I just, I'm enthusiastically in support of this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Okay, so seeing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to Capital Projects, number five, Councilmember Little.
Thank you. Capital Projects, number five, is number 7471. And this is to authorize execution of the 2020 Greening Union County Grant Agreement with, with the county. We authorized submission of a grant application to Union County for a tree-for-tree matching grant, which would allow reimbursement for 50% of the monies expended in this project, and that was approved. And we have been awarded value of a grant for $10,000 to supply 52 trees in the city, and that will go towards our commitment to planting, planting 1,000 trees over four years. So we are very happy to have been awarded this grant, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second that. Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman?
You know, especially after tonight's presentation, I just want to let you know that, you know, the tree in conjunction with Union County are planting trees that conform with JCPN's recommendations to not grow up into the, the power lines. So we're doing our part, if you will.
Thank you.
Exactly right.
Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Can we just remind people of how they can go about requesting a tree to be planted in there right away?
Yes, I think we can do that. Aaron, would you like to address that issue?
Certainly, Council President. Residents should reach out directly to Community Services, specifically to forester John Linson. But anyone at Community Services can add them to the list. We do have a backlist right now, but with this program that will extend the next three years, we should be able to accommodate all requests.
And the number there is? Thank you.
And may I say that I got a tree, and it didn't look like it was doing well. But the forester came in and checked, and said he thinks it's going to be okay. But if it's not, the city, or the county, actually, not the city, the county will replace another one. So they follow through. It's worth doing.
Yeah, we have a lot of trees coming up in the next few years, so I hope people will consider taking a tree. Are there any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, Capital Projects, number six, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Number six is Resolution 7472, and this is to declare a vacancy for a part-time assistant in the Department of Community Services. And this vacancy is arising because the current employee, Charlene Thomas Pierce, is actually going to be moving from Community Services over to the Fire Department. And if you'll remember that, we declared a vacancy for a full-time administrator for the Fire Department a while ago, and we are very pleased that Charlene will be fulfilling that position and staying with the city. But now we have a vacancy in the Community Services Department for her prior position. So we would like to declare this vacancy tonight, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So moving on, Capital Projects, number seven, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, and this is the final Capital Projects Resolution. I'm sure everyone will be happy to hear. It's number 7474, and this is to authorize a zoning board reassignment and appoint a new member. And we have had several unexpected vacancies on the zoning board. And in order to make sure that we continue to have a quorum for this board so that they can fulfill their very important duties, we would like to fulfill this vacancy now, rather than waiting until the end of the year when we do our normal appointments. And we have an excellent candidate for the zoning board, and that is Claire Toast. She's a longtime resident of Summit. She has been very involved in a number of volunteer positions in Summit, including on the SCI Board as a business owner in the downtown, and on our Historic Preservation Commission. She's a lawyer and finance expert, and she's going to do an excellent job, I'm sure, as a new member of the zoning board. And we are very pleased that she agreed to take this position. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now moving on, we have one resolution from Safety and Health, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I am moving forward, Safety and Health Resolution ID 7447, that will authorize the submission of a grant application for the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Year-End Holiday Crackdown Grant. This grant, in the amount of $6,000, would fund DWI overtime enforcement details for roving enforcement and checkpoints to stop intoxicated drivers from December 4 through January 1, 2021. I move this resolution for approval.
I second.
All right. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So we're now moving on to, to our consent agenda. Are there, usually, we take all of those matters as a whole, unless anyone would like to discuss any of the items individually. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. The first one, ID number 7412, is a change order on the Huntley Road area improvement project, and it's $69,000 under budget. So I just wanted to call that out, because I think it's a big deal. So.
You stole my thunder.
All right.
We always like to talk about those when they come on, come in under budget. But yes, if you hadn't mentioned it, Councilmember Vartan, I certainly would have. This was a, you know, we like these kind of change orders that move in the direction of seven, almost $70,000 towards the city. So this was a great project on the Huntley Road Improvement Project, and it came in well under budget. So we're happy to see that.
Great. So do we have a motion to, to approve? Can we just approve the whole consent agenda, even though we discussed that one, or do we have to do them separately?
You can approve the whole, you can approve the entire consent agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the entire consent agenda now?
I'll move that.
Okay, any second? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're moving on to council members' comments or new business. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say tonight? Councilmember Little?
I just wanted to say something. There was a comment during the public comments about a Facebook page and calling out council members for not saying anything about it.
and calling out council members for not saying anything about it. I just wanted to make clear that that Facebook page, to my knowledge, had had nothing to do with any members of the council or anyone involved with the city. And I didn't want to leave with an impression, since we didn't comment on the public comments, that that Facebook page or any of the things that were referenced in those comments had anything to do with anyone here on the dais. To my knowledge, it did not. I do think, you know, we've heard a lot about civility and the way that our council behaves. I've been involved in this council for, you know, quite a while. And before that, was attended many meetings. I think we all treat each other with a great deal of civility and respect. And I, and I want to kind of move on from this conversation. There's been a lot of comments about how we treat each other. And I, and I think we've listened and heard the community, and we've been very, you know, we've been very respectful about taking those comments in. And I hope that we can, now that the election's over, and we can all move on and go on in the way that we always do with respect and civility towards each other, which I have always seen demonstrated on this council.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make? Mayor, go ahead.
I just wanted to share with council, because I think a couple of you know, but not everybody. Nancy Adams, the Executive Director of SDI, applied for a grant from Main Street, New Jersey, for $120,000, which is a lot of money. And she, it was approved. So the money will be spent on, a portion of it will be spent on the street light, you know, the Edison lights that are on Springfield and, you know, Maple and whatever, Beechwood. And then the rest, they're going to plunge into the Sustained Summit Fund and open up another round of grants for the downtown businesses. So she's just been terrific. The, I have to say, SDI has been an amazingly supportive organization to help the downtown businesses. And I think their board needs, you know, if you ever run into any... And maybe I'll send everybody the list of, you probably don't know, the list of the board members. They've worked really hard to support our businesses downtown. And Nancy's been phenomenal. So I just think it's very good news.
That is great news. Mayor, can you just clarify? Because I know in the past, the Sustained Summit Fund has also helped businesses outside of the downtown.
Oh, yes. Sustained Summit Fund helps any business who has a location, an address within the city limits, anywhere, not just in the downtown, anywhere within the city limits. And so thus far, it had been close to $800,000, and now there might be, you know, another, another close to 100. So I don't know.
So the grant money will still be available to businesses outside of the downtown?
Absolutely.
Okay, and that's one thing that I think, I know that SDI's role is to deal with the downtown, but Nancy and her board, to their credit, have done a lot of work to help other businesses outside of the downtown as well.
They have, and when she, she'll get the money, they'll pay off the Edison lights, you know, fee, whatever it costs to buy those Edison lights that are on Springfield and wherever. And then, God, I feel like my hands are floating. Sorry. And then they will put the money into the Sustained Summit Fund, and they will let everybody who was already available, or, you know, to get those funds. And that's within the entire city, any business within the city.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Oh, Miss Susan, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to extend our time long, but I just have to shout out our city engineer, Aaron Schreger, who, when we talk about communication, I want to raise the long-term construction that's been going on Kent Place Boulevard that should be coming to a close. And we have endured the work that has been JCPNL, PSENG, now American Water, and having to coordinate through the county and those three companies during a pandemic, during a storm, and just so much more inquiries from community members. I just want to thank him for managing that process. Thank the police officers who have been, I know, closing off the street and making it uncomfortable or making it unknown for us. But I believe we're coming to the end of that road. And if Aaron can just let us know where we are, because I just think this would be something that will make many of the residents who ride down that road happy that we're coming to a close.
Okay, so the latest is that PSENG has committed to completing all work on Friday, or by Friday, rather, which is November 6th. So immediately following that, New Jersey American Water will be overseeing the paving of Kent Place Boulevard, where they did do all the excavation. So the last day we had for that was the 13th, but we're hoping to accelerate it. I think they were hesitant to commit until they saw PSENG was fully done. But it appears PSENG will meet their timeline, and then the paving can commence shortly thereafter. So it looks like we are as close as we've ever been. Weather's cooperating, so we should be out of there by Thanksgiving.
That's great. Thank you for that report. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, have a good evening, everyone. Stay safe.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.